Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We will come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Greitner.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Semasko is absent. Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner London.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America as it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Hydeman. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carried. The agenda stands as presented. Are there, item number three, are there any citizens to be heard this evening? Citizens to be heard. Any citizens to be heard before the Human Services Committee this evening? Seeing none, we will move to item number four, updates. Updates, by anyone? Seeing none, we will move to conceptual initiatives, number five. Item number five, conceptual initiatives. Seeing none, old business, number six. It's going to start slowing down quick, you guys. Seeing none, item seven, new business. New business, seeing none.
Oh, no.
New business. We begin with 7A, Medicare Advantage. We have had presentations before, but Bill, are you going to give us some discussion?
Sure. Sure. We, at a board meeting a couple of weeks ago, we brought in some folks from Blue Cross, Blue Shield to talk a little bit about an opportunity to make some changes in how we provide health care coverage to post-65 retirees. Basically, moving from a self-insured program to a fully insured program. We became aware of this opportunity, oh, probably four or five months ago, as we started looking seriously at egg whip proposals and other opportunities to reduce our health care costs. So, we started investigating an egg whip with Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and became aware of a Medicare Advantage program that, again, basically moves from self-insured to fully insured. At the meeting a couple of weeks ago, Blue Cross was here, as well as our third-party administrator from Brown and Brown, they made a presentation to the board, which was in your packet. There were a number of questions from the audience and from some of the commission members regarding a number of very specific issues. So what I've done is I've asked Blue Cross to go back and focus their attention on just those issues that seemed to have the highest concern the last time we discussed this, and fill the board in on a little bit more detail about prescription drug coverage, as well as coverage, physician coverage, that would be available throughout the county. So they are here tonight to give you a brief presentation. You've got a copy of it in front of you. And included in that is a document that was shared last time, but we didn't spend a lot of time focusing on it, and that's the multi-colored page document that's at the end of your packet. These documents, for those in the audience that didn't pick them up, there are copies of these on the back table there, so...
Just one comment I'd like to make, Bill. Wasn't when we were looking at the egg whip, we looked at multiple carriers.
Yes, we did.
And, so it wasn't just a Blue Cross thing.
Good. Are we good?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear okay? Microphone's kind of low, so I'll try and talk loud. My name's John Dowsley. I'm with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Michigan. I work in our federal business division, which is a part of the company that handles the Medicare products. Thanks for having me out again. I'm glad to be here to answer some more questions. My office is downtown in Detroit, so anytime I can get out here, I'm always happy to. It's real nice out this way. As far as the presentation itself, I sort of went through a lot of information at the last presentation about what a Medicare Advantage plan is, how it works, some of the benefits, all kinds of different things. But I put together a little bit shorter PowerPoint presentation. I have a copy of it there on the table, probably a good thing for you to follow along. And then there's this handy-dandy little list that's kind of color-coded, that I'm going to walk through some of this information too, as well. So as far as the presentation itself, as I mentioned, we touched a little bit last time on what's a Medicare Advantage plan, so I'm not really going to delve too much into that. Other than to let you know, the Medicare Advantage plans have a contract with the federal government. They have to cover everything that original Medicare covers. Nice thing about them, you combine everything together into one plan, so you have a nice, cohesive way of keeping everything together. But they work a little bit differently than a supplemental plan, like what you have now. Right now, the retirees have a supplemental plan that backs up original Medicare. The Medicare Advantage plan works differently because the members get all the Medicare-covered benefits directly through the plan. So instead of Medicare being primary and another insurance being secondary, it's all coordinated through the insurance company. So as far as the medical plan itself is concerned, we worked really closely with Dan and his team to make sure that we kept the plan very close to the members' current level of benefits. So the members are going to see exactly the same things they see right now. You're going to enjoy the same benefits that you've had for years and years. You're not going to see any disruption in those benefits. You're not going to see any sort of changes as far as what you're going to be expected to pay. Nice thing is, we have some dedicated customer service people. We have medical management programs, Healthy Advantage Rewards programs for the members, a Silver Sneakers Fitness Program, which is a great health program that's also built into the plan. One of the questions we received, though, was specific to the network of doctors and hospitals. Couple of things to let you know, a PPO plan, which is what this is, Medicare Plus Blue Group PPO. PPO stands for Preferred Provider Organization. This is the type of plan where you have a network of doctors and hospitals, but this network is very broad. And you have the option to see any doctor that you choose, but you're going to save money when you go to a doctor in the network. So as far as how the network is broken down, every single hospital network in the state of Michigan is with the PPO plan, except for two. Bronson, over near Kalamazoo, and Spectrum, over near Grand Rapids. If you were traveling to Grand Rapids, you were traveling to Kalamazoo, and you had an emergency, you can go to those hospitals. You can go to those hospitals even if you don't have an emergency, but you're going to pay more to use an out-of-network facility. So there's a lot of questions about traveling outside of Michigan. We have members that go to Florida, and Texas, and Arizona, and these different places for the winter. The way it works outside of Michigan, there is no real network to be concerned with. If you see a doctor outside of the state of Michigan, as long as that doctor accepts Medicare and agrees to see you, you're going to pay that doctor your in-network level. You're not going to pay the out-of-network level outside of the state of Michigan. So it's a nice feature to have. Another thing that's not mentioned up here, but is helpful to some of our members, we have something called the Blue Card Program. The Blue Card Program is not actually a blue card. It's a phone number that's on the back of the ID card. But if you're traveling outside of Michigan, and you don't know where to go, let's say you need an urgent care provider, and you're in Texas, where do I go? You can call that Blue Card number, or go to the Blue Card website, and they can direct you where to go. You don't have to do that, but it's a great feature to have, because it can give you an idea of where to go for services. In the back of the room, I also put on the table a listing of doctors. Our computer system at the office is very user-friendly, but for whatever reason, it won't allow me to print out a list of doctors just alphabetically. You have to put in an amount of miles, you have to put in a zip code, all these different things. So I printed out a list of primary care doctors and a list of specialists within 25 miles of the zip code here. So unfortunately, the doctors are in there, but it might be a little bit difficult to find them if you're looking alphabetically. But as far as the website's concerned, www.bcbsm.com/MyBlueMedicare, there's a provider lookup tool. All you do is go in there, put in the provider's name, click which plan you're interested in, and it tells you what plans the doctor's with. There's also a telesales number, 8774MyBlue. Actually, it's 877MyBlue. What that is, is a telesales number that goes directly to our main office in downtown Detroit. You can talk to somebody, they can look up the doctor for you. It's a very simple procedure. Between the doctors that many of the members are seeing now and the doctors that are in the PPO, there's very little disruption between those two. The network is very broad. So as far as the prescription drug portion of it is concerned, there were a lot of questions about the formulary. The formulary, all Medicare Part D plans are required to have a formulary. It's a big book of covered drugs. So, one question about the formulary was, how do we know that all the drugs that people are going to need to take are in the formulary? Well, we have to follow CMS guidelines. CMS puts out a book called The Medicare Marketing Guidelines, The Medicare Prescription Drug Manual. In the Medicare Prescription Drug Manual, Chapter Six tells us, we call it the Bible, too, by the way, I put that up there, because that's the rules we have to follow. It indicates that CMS requires all Part D plans to have a formulary, okay? CMS evaluates these formularies to make sure they include the necessary classifications of drugs, and that it is broad enough not to discourage any beneficiary from enrolling. So what that means is, you're not going to find in the formulary that it's not going to cover drugs for rheumatoid arthritis, or heart disease, or gout, or something like that, because it has to cover certain classifications of drugs. So what we did, when we were looking at this whole process, was originally, we were looking at something that we call an open formulary. An open formulary, we have different formularies. We have a lean formulary, we have an open formulary, we have an enhanced open formulary. So we looked originally at the open formulary, because there's some more cost savings there. We took the claims history from the past year or two, bumped it up against the Medicare Part D open formulary. So what we found under the open formulary was that there was a disruption of about 5 or 6% between the drugs that were currently being used and the drugs that were covered on that open formulary. So what we did was, we worked with our pharmacy partners, and with Dan, and with everyone to find a plan that would work a little bit more better, a little bit more better, a little bit better. What we settled on was the enhanced open formulary. The enhanced open formulary gives us a lot of drugs that traditionally Medicare Part D doesn't cover. The federal government and the Part D program has a list of drugs that they cover, and they have lists of drugs that they don't cover. And this open formulary takes all of those different drugs and puts them together into the formulary. So what we did, we compared what we would end up with if we went with the enhanced open formulary, and what we found was that enhanced open formulary provided coverage for approximately 98% of the prescription drugs currently covered. So what we did was, this is the analysis that we did, this little handy-dandy colored form here. Right up at the top, about the only source of concern that I see is up here at the top, there were some prescriptions for, I can't even pronounce what they are, but what I'm told by my pharmacy area, is that these are cough medicines, cough and cold medicines with codeine in them. Medicare Part D does not cover cough and cold medications. There are cough and cold medications in the open enhanced formulary that you'd be able to use, but you could also purchase these cough and cold medications over the counter. The next ones, in the little pinkish color, these are over-the-counter medications that people are getting a prescription for and going to the pharmacy and getting them filled. It's going to cost these members less to go buy it over the counter than it is for them to go get a prescription filled. Loratadine is one of them. I take Loratadine, that's Claritin. I buy 400 of them at Costco for 12 bucks, so it's not a big concern as far as the cost. The purple section are lifestyle drugs. These are drugs like Viagra and other certain drugs. The funny thing about Viagra is, it actually is used to treat other things. It was originally used to treat something else, and the side effect is now the desired effect. But the point is, is if you're using it for the intended purpose originally, it's going to be covered. But for a lifestyle drug, in the enhanced open formulary, it's added into that. I had a question about whether or not that could be taken out of the enhanced open formulary. And unfortunately, because of the design of the formulary, we can't take it out. The formulary is designed to have it in there, because we had a whole lot of people asking for those drugs. To take it out of the formulary, we'd have to create yet another open enhanced formulary without the lifestyle drugs, which could take as long as it took to create this open formulary, which was probably about more than a year. So as far as this lighter blue color, you'll see on the one side over here, which is actually, as you're looking at, at the left side, it says "not covered" on all these different drugs. Originally, these drugs, what they were, was the open formulary. So we bumped them up, and in the open formulary, all of these weren't covered. But so what we found over here in this blue section is, is that all these drugs that weren't covered in the open formulary would be covered in the open enhanced formulary. So those, then, are not an issue. As far as this greenish color, it shows you that there are some drugs that are covered if you use a generic, or there's drugs that are covered if you use a different version of the same medication. In this pinkish color, that pinkish color shows you drugs that are excluded from Part D because they're on the DESI, or DESI LTE list. What that means is, these drugs are very, very old. They were approved by the Food and Drug Administration before drugs had to be both safe and effective. So the drugs are proven to be safe, but not necessarily effective. So there's other drugs in the formulary that are safe and effective. Down at the bottom here, there's a lighter green color. It says MultiGen. MultiGen is a multivitamin. This particular drug, or vitamin, is not covered in the open formulary, but it's covered in the enhanced. So you could have it in the enhanced formulary, or you could purchase a multivitamin. Down at the bottom, it shows you AccuCheck, and AccuCheck Active, and a lot of different things that people are familiar with. These are blood testing machines and blood testing strips for diabetics. Those items are covered under the medical portion of the plan. They're covered under Part B. They're not covered under the pharmacy. Interesting thing, the syringes for injection of diabetic medications are covered under the Part D, but the machines to test the blood and the test strips fall under Part B. So then there were a couple other drugs in a lighter green section on the back, that are drugs like nitroglycerin and sodium sulfur. These particular drugs are not covered in this actual drug that's listed, but the same drug is covered under a different name. So the way it's set up is, there are other drugs that are available that do the same exact thing. Down at the bottom in the gray section, these particular drugs were showing up as not covered. But they are covered drugs, what we found out is, there must have been some sort of coding error when they were put through, because they are covered drugs, but for whatever reason, they bumped out on the list. So as far as the list is concerned, when you narrow it down, taking out the cough and cold medications, the drugs that are added due to the open formulary, the diabetic testing things that are covered under Part B, there really is very, very small difference between what the members have now and what the Part D plan would do. So, some of the things under Part D that this showed us was that some were covered under Part B, some were the lifestyle drugs, some were over-the-counter medications, some were cough and cold preparations that could normally be purchased for less than $10. Some were on the DESI LTE list, and some were those diabetic supplies covered under Part B. Couple of things I wanted to reassure you is, that drugs normally prescribed and used for common chronic conditions, such as heart disease, diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, arthritis, and other common conditions, I think that just about covers my mom. I think she's got, oh, she doesn't have diabetes, but other than that, she's got pretty much all of those. But all the treatments for those particular chronic conditions are covered in the formulary. There's questions about catastrophic health conditions. Sometimes people have to have a heart transplant, or a lung transplant, or unfortunately, they have HIV, or AIDS, or something like that. But prescriptions used to treat those catastrophic conditions, like those immunosuppressant drugs, antidepressants, antipsychotics, anticonvulsive medications, HIV and AIDS treatments, as well as those cancer drugs, are all built into the formulary. In fact, Part D requires that these classes of drugs be in the formularies to mitigate any complications associated with interrupting therapy of those particular conditions. So Medicare is looking out for you, even if you're on a Part D plan. They're not going to let you get into a plan that's not going to cover what you need. So the members, as far as the plan is set up, you're going to continue to pay the same copays that you enjoy now. That's not going to change for you, and you're really not going to be limited as far as what you have to get. So are there any questions? Anything that I can touch on that?
John, I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
And a couple of questions, actually. We have, Mr. Kaufman gave us, in the packets, there's some information from Bill on Medicare Advantage, and there's a couple of comments, a couple of things I wanted to mention, including the savings for the county of 862,128 for 2013.
Right.
And some of the other comments that you covered tonight. But one of the questions I wanted to mention was, it says that the county, after a year, could go back to the option of the funding that we have now if the program costs increased. So I understand that part. But I guess I would say, are there other reasons why we could go back in a year? Say, the service wasn't there, the customer service wasn't as good, or, I mean, if we wanted to make changes back in a year, does that mean we would have other options?
You're not limited as far as why you could change back, not just because of the cost. If, for some reason, you found the service wasn't there, you found that something was missing, the members weren't getting what you thought they would get, you're not just limited by the cost. If you feel that the plan doesn't work for you, you can go back.
One other thing I would mention, before the other commissioners probably have questions too, but on the card, there's only one card they'll be carrying.
Correct.
In our wallets, in our purses. So are the phone numbers there for the doctors that we would be, or for the healthcare, for the customer service and all that, is that on the card?
Yeah. The ID card that the members receive, on the front of the card, it has the member's ID number, which is, for one good thing, it's actually what they call a de-identified number. It's not your social security number, which happens to be on your red, white, and blue Medicare card. So by not carrying that red, white, and blue Medicare card, the ID card that you receive from Blue Cross has that de-identified number on the front. It has the Medicare Prescription Drug logo on the front. It has the group number and all that information there. On the back of the card, it has the customer service numbers, it has the websites, it has information about the plan, it has a phone number where providers can call as well if they have questions about the plan.
All right, thank you, John. Any questions for John?
I just had a question. Originally, the projected savings was 862,128. Does going to the enhanced formulary change that projected savings?
Nope. Do you want to take that, Dan?
I read the cause analysis. Dan Skyler of Brown and Brown, we're a consultant with the county. Yeah, that's based on the enhanced formulary.
Okay, thank you.
That's net of everything. Look like.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Other questions?
Before I go, there was...
I'll ask one.
Okay.
What I asked you a specific question the last time you were here, how did you come up with your quote cost to save, where it's allowing the county to save $862,000 in first initial annual savings?
Right.
I don't want to get sticker shock the second year.
Right. The actual premiums, the way we come up with that, the amount that you're showing there, the $800,000, was a projection that Dan put together. How we work it is, we have a set amount that we get paid by the government for each member based on where that member lives within the state. This particular area of the state is a very well-funded area. That's good. You people are healthy here, you're taking care of yourselves. But we're paid very well in this area for the members that are here. What we do is, we do an analysis. We're provided a census with the members' zip codes and where they live. We put it through our tool based on the benefits that we receive, that we're putting together, including the drugs and what sort of copays and things are built in. That tool gives us a per-member-per-month premium. That per-member-per-month premium is what we gave to Dan, and Dan came up with the cost savings.
Right. Well, if you remember my question prior too, because indirectly, now you're going to get paid by the federal government.
Right.
And the quote shows 1.267 mil. And your cost, you're going to have to get more than that to be in business. You have to make a profit as a business.
Right.
Right. So indirectly, there's going to be a tact on the American public to help cover this cost. Even though the county won't assume it, there will be a cost that's going to be incurred at the federal level.
Right. I can't speak to what happens at the federal level and where the money comes from, from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, but that's where we get the funding from, is the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. Yep.
It'll get a little deeper, but I could ask, same thing with Medicaid, potentially with Obamacare, they're going to be cutting off the funding to the states.
Right. Right. Well, with the Medicare Advantage, one of the nice things about that is that there really aren't going to be any changes due to the Obamacare, whether it goes through or whether it doesn't go through. The changes that Medicare is making, they're making it now. They're doing things like adding more preventative services, doing away with the coverage gap, the donut hole in the individual programs, all kinds of different things they're working in. It's not going to change whether that plan goes up or down. Anything else to that? I did have another, a little small topic before I leave. Dan wanted me to touch on a couple of things about members who may have different coverages available to them. Because these are federal plans, Medicare Advantage plans are federal plans, if somebody's offered another federal plan, they're not eligible to have two. So let's say, for instance, you have somebody who's retired from the teachers, from the MIPSers. MIPSers have a Medicare Advantage plan available to their retirees. If someone's covered under the MIPSers plan, as a Medicare plan, they can't be covered under the county plan, because he can't have two Medicare Advantage plans. If, for some reason, somebody dropped the retiree, the teacher's retiree plan to go to the county plan, the MIPSers plan allows for people to re-enter their plan. You would contact your benefit office, or your human resources, or your Office of Employee Services, whoever you have contact with. If you wish to go back to that plan, the spouse could go on the plan through the teachers, the other member could stay here with the county, or you could both go back to the teachers, or you could both stay with the county. Yes.
I just want to clarify, they'll still have, even if they're enrolled in another Medicare Advantage plan, they'll still have insurance with the county. Don't just stay on this thing or something.
There is a way to do that, if... If, for some reason, the member wants to have the MIPSers plan, for instance, it's the spouse, that's her retiree coverage, she wants to have the MIPSers plan, she can have that plan, she can also have the county plan, but she can't have the county Medicare Advantage plan. She'd have to have a county secondary plan, or a tertiary type plan.
So what they have to do is...
Exactly. Exactly. But that was a question that came up. Another question came up about a railroad retiree member. As far as my understanding of it, railroad retiree members are eligible to join Medicare Advantage plans unless they have some other sort of federal supplemental plan. If they have another federal supplemental plan that's acting secondary to their Medicare, they can't have the Medicare Advantage plan.
In that situation, again, they would just have the...
Exactly. Yep. They can't do two federal plans. Anything else?
All right, we've had a workshop on this, and we had offered questions from the audience, and so, and we've got the questions from the board. Are there any other questions?
Yes.
This is strictly board questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not public audience.
Any other questions? Bill, is there any other discussion? Okay, do I hear them? A motion?
I make a... Take this to the full board.
Is there a second?
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number B, Health Department Plan Organization Approval. We have Greg Brown with us from the Health Department.
Good evening, gentlemen, and lady, too, I guess. What you have in front of you is a packet, I think I...
Hey, Tammy, I don't mean to interrupt. Can you take him maybe and put him in the room, and they can ask some individual questions of him? Yeah, why don't you do that, see if they can stick around, that would work out. Good move.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Good move.
The Plan of Organization is essentially a document that describes how the Health Department works, what we do, what we enforce, and proves that we exist. We have an accreditation process we have to go through every three years, where the Department of Community Health and DEQ, who fund some of our programs, come down and evaluate the program. Our accreditation year is, in fact, this year in November. So every three years, we have to update this Plan of Organization, and I've provided you with a copy, a complete copy of what we're going to provide, or what we want to provide to the state. But under the Public Health Code, this is required, and it's required that it be approved by our local Board of Commissioners. So I hope you've had a chance to take a look through it. It is quite lengthy, includes a lot of information. It is basically the same one that we've had over the last few, this is cycle five for accreditation, so this has been going on for 15 years. So this is a culmination of all those years. We've had to add a couple of things new this year that were not in last year's, and that would be Dr. Mercantot's designation as a medical health officer. She hadn't had that designation yet as of last year. So that's new. And the only other thing that's new in there, we had to come up with our... Now I'm lost. Our infection control plan, what has to do with our nursing services, that plan, they always looked at it accreditation, didn't have to be in this Plan of Organization. This year, we had to, we updated it in 2011, so basically, we just took that plan that we had updated previously and put it in here. So this is a complete plan that I need to have approved by the board, and we need to send this to the state this month.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? Mr. Grayton?
I'm looking at the policy premium for like $7,500, and I believe it's medical professional liability policy. Is that, that covers Dr. Mercantot?
That is correct.
Does it also cover everybody that works under Dr. Mercantot?
Under her, yes, that is correct.
That's the total policy cost for all of the Health Department?
Correct.
All right.
Well, there's, the county, we're still under the county policy for other issues, but for medical issues under Dr. Mercantot, our nurse practitioners, that is the policy that we have.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Commissioner Rushi?
Yeah, I guess we're going to be forwarding this to the full board. I don't know if you need final action tonight, but would it be possible to get a copy, because to get the specific differences between 2009 and 2012, just in case there's some anomaly in there? Because I didn't have nothing to compare it to.
Okay.
Other than specifics, I believe the watershed probably is new in here, potentially anyways. So I'd like a copy of the, because we're going to be having this before the full board, and I believe in two weeks anyways. I'd like that information.
Okay, we're going to forward that on.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Brown?
You mentioned that it's due to the state this month, is waiting for the full board meeting timely enough to meet your requirements?
It is due on the 26th of September, so I think the board meeting is just prior to that.
Yep.
So as long as we have access, I will need a copy of the minutes, I don't know how, if I can get it that quickly, but as long as we do, we can send it electronically, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'd make a motion to send the Health Department Plan of Organization on the full board.
Move by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Heidemann. All those in favor, the motion before, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Next item is 7C, Temporary Food License, Food Service License Fee Increase. We have Steve with us from Environmental at the Public Health Department. Hi, Steve.
Hello, Steve Demick, Environmental Health Director for the county. The Health Department is requesting approval to raise the temporary food service license fees to recover associated costs with that service. Basically, we evaluated all of our fees, and it was determined that that temporary food service licensee was most out of line with the cost associated with the program. On average, we issue about 250 temporary food service licenses annually, and those are broken down into two tiers, nonprofits and for-profit operations. And the issue with temporary food service licenses, these are one-time events, and approximately two-thirds of them are on weekends or after hours, so that creates extra special issues as far as staffing and manpower issues. It is a state-mandated inspection, and it is a component of our annual accreditation process. And we just are seeking this to recover the costs associated with that service.
Do you want to explain what a temporary food, just give a, for example?
Two tiers of food service licenses from the county is the fixed food service license, that's your restaurants, anything that operates on a daily basis. Temporary food operations are generally one-time events, less than two weeks duration, the events associated with fairs, festivals, carnivals, those type of inspections. Those present a little extra issues too, as far as our staff, too, because you're dealing with people that aren't familiar with food service operation and dealing and serving the public, so it does require an extra educational component.
Yeah, Steve, I have a question. As I recall, I'm the County Board of Commissioners representative to the Health Department, as you probably know. For my recollection, on the decreases from, as Howard would say, the mandates from the state, which is true, the, those mandated costs and reimbursement costs to the Health Department are about 17%. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I believe so.
So if we were to consider and think about that figure of 17%, but yet, if we take a look on the back of our sheet where we're comparing the proposed increase and the current increase, forgetting for a moment the other counties, some of them are close to 100% increase. So I was just curious to know, why, how did we come up, how did you come up, how did the Health Department come up with these numbers, based on the 17% that's in my head about, okay, their reimbursement is 17% less, so now we're going almost 100% increase on the temporary food licenses?
These fees haven't been increased for a few years, and just basically looking at them, it's at least a two-hour process generally, to go out to the event, do the inspection, and then return. And so basically, we're just taking the actual cost of the service provided as far as manpower and mileage to determine those amounts. And even with this increase, we strive to be the lowest, and even with the increase, we are the lowest probably out of the surrounding counties. We did a fee study of six surrounding counties, and with this, we will still be amongst the lowest. I should mention, too, that there is two tiers of inspection. There is a late fee associated with those licenses, because in the past, we would get, people would show up the day before the event, and that obviously would create major issues with us, especially with our reduced staff, in order to get, you know, inspectors out to the site. So the late fee, which is a general practice, every other county and pretty much, I think the state has that type of late fee involved with it.
How long has these fees, these existing fees here been in place?
Yeah, the current fees, I think it was like 2009 was the last time that they were adjusted, but that was a modest adjustment. It was across the board on our food service fees, wasn't particular to temporary foods.
Any other questions for Steve? Masco? Commissioner Masco?
Can you give us information on the average amount of monies that a temporary license holder might derive from an effort? In other words, are these people making five grand at a pop, or 100 bucks at a pop?
Well, that's kind of why we broke it down into two tiers, nonprofit and profit. That's pretty standard. A few counties don't do that, but we thought that was important. But the for-profit operations, yeah, on a weekend at a busy festival, we hear numbers of at least, you know, they can make easily $5,000, $10,000 on an event.
They can make. The question is, do you have any data on, hard data on what they actually make? Are we talking about people at concessionaires, who are professionals, who travel around? Or are we talking about somebody that's not a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so to speak, so, but they're still basically a mom and pop, or somebody trying to, a small venture where, you know, $100 might be half or 10% of what they're going to make? What's, any information on that?
The majority of them are out of county, that, you know, travel with the particular festivals, and then come to the county for a week, and then they're gone. And that's actually, when we were doing the study, and it showed that there was, we do issue more nonprofit licenses, it's about 60% of them are nonprofits, 40% profits, but the majority of late fees are the for-profit operations. It's a very small minority that we have to charge late fee for the nonprofits. It's more the for-profits that are, you know, coming to town last minute, need an inspection, and then they leave for elsewhere.
So the types of nonprofits, you said about 150 licenses a year, is that the same, a lot of the same nonprofits, are there like a handful of nonprofits, or is there 100 nonprofits using this service?
No, it's pretty consistent, you know, you get the same church festivals or gatherings on an annual basis. It's probably broken, I would say about 50%, you know, that are repeat annual-type events as opposed to one-time events, and then we don't see them again.
Would it be fair to say that most nonprofits are rooted within the county?
Yeah, that's a fair statement.
Would it be fair to say that most of the for-profits then are transient or regional people that are not rooted strictly within the county?
I would, we haven't done any studies on it, but yeah, in my opinion, yeah, that seems to be the majority of the for-profits are ones that, you know, travel a circuit more so. They might more be located in the tri-county or, you know, metropolitan area, but yeah, they're not residents or reside in the county.
This fee increase is not something that you're doing in order to add staff?
No, that's...
This is just calculation on...
Strictly a cost recovery basis.
How would you respond to the position that, you know, the public's already paying for this once, why do we pay for it twice? In other words, we pay your fees, we support you, we put you in place, and now you want us to pay you again with a special added fee? How would you respond to that?
This is primarily a fee for service. I mean, this is a service that we provide, that it requires extra in addition to our normal inspections, where we can kind of correlate events and, you know, work on efficiencies in that way. With the temporaries, there might be one event on a weekend that we have to do an inspection on, and it requires obviously manpower and mileage associated with that.
Would you, I mean, I kind of buy that, I guess, as it relates to persons not rooted in the county, that don't necessarily, through taxes, pay for the service. That would make sense, but for purposes, say the nonprofits rooted in the county, who primarily already provide you and your services and your paycheck and your building and so forth, you know, that was, your response to those people who are transients would be, or regional people would be, this is a service you should pay for, because you're coming and using the service? But you would agree that wouldn't necessarily, that logic wouldn't apply to those people, say the nonprofits, who are rooted here and already contribute by reason of taxes?
Greg, do you want to say something?
I won't. I'm joking. I can tell you, being on the other side of it with the vendors, you guys know I'm involved in the boat race like crazy in St. Clair, those vendors are the biggest pain. I'll leave out the rest of it.
I guess what I'm doing, is I'm saying, we focus this fee increase more on, say, the vendors than on, say, the nonprofits, who my colleagues pointed out don't pay taxes as nonprofits, but still primarily are church groups and functions and, you know, things within the county that...
They're paying taxes, they better do it no turn.
Stephen, the other point, the other point, Steve, would, this is just part of, a partial of the answer that you're asking about, and that is, the state is reducing their reimbursement to the Health Department by 17%. That invited my first question to say, this much of an increase, but the, part of the answer is, the reimbursement has been, is being reduced from the state of Michigan by 17%.
Okay, all right, that's fine, I'm satisfied.
Well, I just, can I just add one thing, though? Because actually, the service doesn't really go to the vendor. The service really is for everybody who lives in this county, because it's the food safety. If we had one foodborne outbreak with 100 sick people at the boat races, what would that do for your attendance next year? So regardless of we're getting state, when we do get state money for the state mandated program, it's just not enough to run it. But locally, it serves everybody who visits this county, you don't want your visitors getting sick as well while they're here for these events. So I think it, I think the service really is for the citizens of the county, not just the vendors. Just my two cents.
Point well made.
Good point. Any further?
And I personally think it'll raise your vendor quality, too. I mean, there's a lot of, we went through the old fly-by-night thing, I've been on both ends of the spectrum of it, and, you know, there's just, I hate to say, some of them, you'd rather not have them there.
And we did make a conscious effort to be the lowest of any of the local communities. We did evaluate that.
Commissioner Grayton?
One quick question. If you go to the site and you find it not satisfactory, you give them some sort of a warning, you tell them what they need to do, do you then return to make sure that it is up to speed, and do you charge them for that second callback?
We would charge them on a second callback. Generally, a lot of the issues that can be resolved when we're still on site, so that's obviously our main goal, is to do that while we're there. We try to get to events, actually, before they open to the public, obviously, so that we can catch any issues beforehand and correct them.
What do you charge for a return visit?
Generally, I think $50 is the normal fee for a return, for a re-inspection.
Any further questions? Yes.
Your actual cost for this inspections, what is your actual cost annually?
It varies, obviously, depending upon the amount of time we're at the event, but it would range around $100 would be a fair estimate. We've got, you know, staff issues, they get comp time, time and a half for after-hour weekend-type inspections, and then we have mileage, which is, you know, $55 and a half cents.
From what you stated earlier, you have 250, and it roughly takes two hours, so that's 500 hours. You're currently charging an average of close to $60, so you're receiving $30,000 on that. So I was wondering what the actual budget cost is for your department? Because I'm not a big fan, I mean, it's good to have this information, but if we're just going to raise fees because we're lower than our neighbors, I don't think that's a good reason to raise fees. Now, if we have a cost that we need to recoup, which was part of your cover letter, that we need to cover the cost, what are our actual costs to do these inspections? What has been annually?
Broken down, I mean, you said 30,000, I don't, my number's...
Well, you said 500...
250.
Right, 250 inspections, you stated earlier, two hours per inspection, so 250 times two, 500, then you take your cost, it averages close to $60 per inspection, if you average whatever they are, 60 times your 500 hours, 30,000 dollars.
That's not an hourly cost, that's a license fee for however long we're at the event.
You're doing 250 inspections.
Correct.
These are your fees. If it averages close to 60 currently, and you're using 500 hours total...
I figure right here, as we come up with about $11,000 is the current fee that it generates.
Okay. I don't follow that, because if you're averaging 60 and you're doing 250 inspections, okay. But I would be interested in to find out what your actual cost is for the county, before we go and raise fees, to find out what our budget is. I don't want to raise fees... I don't want to raise fees just to be raising them. Now, if we're running a deficit, I can justify raising the fees, but just to compare it to our neighbors, I don't think that's a good reason to raise fees. I'd like that information. And, you know, like maybe a five-year history, it should be pretty easy to find on your budget what you've been spending on personnel to do these inspections.
I can assure you that it's more than the current fee. It's significantly more than the current fee.
That's how we, I believe we should justify what we're going to charge, because then we might find out that the fees that you're actually wanting to raise it to might not even cover the service that we're currently doing. Maybe we actually need to have even higher fees than what you're proposing. I think that'd be a better way to make sure that we're covering the cost to the county for these inspections, so I'd like that information.
Any further questions, Commissioners?
I was just gonna-
Mr. Ward?
I was just going to ask if you would post, if this were to pass, do you post this or send some kind of notice, particularly to not-for-profits locally?
Yeah, we would try to. The ones that we, you know, that have the annual-type event, we could get notice out of them.
I mean, I'm not suggesting you go through the expense of a mailing, but, you know, there's somewhere to put it on your website.
We would publicize it as much as possible.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Hyman?
I would move the proposed temporary food service licensing fee increase be sent to the full board meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion for us? We need roll call. All those in favor, I would like to vote no on the, I'm going to vote-
Call for, call for-
Okay, the clerk will call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
No.
Commissioner Rushing?
Let's go on to the full board, so I can do that. So, for now, for yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried. Five, two.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the, moving on to the next item, library appointment. We have in your packet Kathleen Willhand is, sent a letter requesting that she wants to continue on the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that, we forward that name onto the full board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried. Okay, item number D, medical examiner appointment for Potrangelo. You have an, information in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that, that move on to the full board. Support.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carried. Other human services matters, number eight. Seeing none, moving on to number nine, information only. You have in your packet, the Area Agency on Aging, 1B Quarterly Report. I would like to make just one comment on that before we vote on it to receive and file, and that would be that they are requesting the payment of $3,641, which is about 50, I'm the representative from the county board to the Area Agency on Aging, and their pay for services from them is $15,000 a year, so if you do the math, that's a quarterly amount of money, so. I would just say, I'm looking for a motion to receive and file unless there's some questions.
I would move to receive and file packets pertaining to human services.
And a second?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Move, we adjourn.
Are we going to receive and file packets first, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I thought you just did that.
Oh, we did? All right.
Move, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
We're going to go a little out of order. This time, I'd call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Ways and Means Committee to order. Take the roll, please. You didn't know this, huh?
I'm just, I can't keep up with this. Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Hyman?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Greitop?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
We have a forum.
Are there additions, deletions, changes to the agenda?
Make a motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda stands as presented. Are there citizens to be heard for Ways and Means Matters? Seeing none, any updates? Hearing none, conceptual initiatives? No old business, moving on, item 7A, new business. Paul Bailey is here from Stewart-Bovee in Whipple.
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Paul Bailey. I'm the principal of the CPA firm that does your annual audit. Hopefully, everybody got a copy of their audit in their packet. It's a pretty large document, 150 pages or so. We're not going to turn through every page tonight. What I've done is placed at, each of your places, a little packet that will have everything that we're going to cover tonight in it, and then you have the larger documents to get a little bit more detail if you have any, anything you want a little more detail or further questions. Before I get started, again, I am Paul Bailey. I am the principal in charge of your audit. This is Karen Shafik. She's the senior on the job. She's here dated, on a day-to-day basis. We start your audit somewhere in the middle of April. It takes us about five to six weeks to actually complete your audit. We go out to most of the departments, do a number of testing. Then we have to pull this document together and submit it to a number of federal and state entities, and that's why we're here today. And I can say, everything went very well during your audit. Your staff's very cooperative with us. All the departments are cooperative. We call and ask ahead of time, and everybody is very cooperative and let us look at anything we ask for. If we turn in just past the title page on that handout that you have, one of the first things in the audit report is something called the Independent Audit Report. It's actually page one of that packet. It's really the only portion of the audit that belongs to Stewart-Bovee and Whipple. It's where our firm gives an opinion on whether your financial statements are presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, and you have what they call an unqualified or clean opinion. And that's the best type of opinion a governmental unit can receive or any commercial entity can receive. And that's what the state's looking for when they get your audit report, is it unqualified or is it qualified for a reason? And again, yours is unqualified. Number two on that handout on our outline is what they call the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Annually, you submit your report to an agency out of Chicago. It's called a GFOA. And they go through your audit report with a very fine-tooth comb and make sure everything is in accordance with not only governmental auditing standards but practices out there. You received the award for 2010. It takes them about a year for you to get the award. Yours is notified somewhere in December or January of the following year. You received it in, I think, December of 2011 for the 2010. You also submitted it for the 2011. We expect you to receive it for the 2011, but they do go through it page by page, letter by letter in the report, and they're very picky about it. The next couple items, we're not going to spend a lot of time on. It's called the management, is a portion of the audit report called the Management Discussions and Analysis. It's pages three through 13 in the audit report. It's about a 15-page letter. And basically, what it does is it explains to the reader some very summarized financial information about the county, about how your financial statements are put together, and the results of the year that just ended, as well as what's expected in a very summarized form for the year coming up. Roman numeral four there on the presentation is what they call the county-wide financial statements. Your financial statements basically have two sets of financial statements. You have the, a commercial set of financial statements, and you have the way governments have traditionally reported. The commercial way was started about five or six years ago, and it includes the value of your building, it includes all the bond issues you owe, things like that. So, it's a very large number. Your assets are very large when you look at that. We're not going to spend a lot of time on that, but it is required to get that unqualified opinion in there. It does include things such as if you don't pay for, what the actuarial determines in your pension benefits or your post-retirement benefits, the liabilities recorded on your financial statement. Where in governmental way of looking at your county, it's not recorded in the general fund only as you pay it or as it comes due. We'll get down to the bottom of page one, I'm still on the handout. The general fund, where most, a lot of the county activity takes place. You'll see the county had assets of $18,920,000 as of December 31, 2011. You had liabilities of $9,647, which left a fund balance of $9,273,080, and we'll talk about, a little bit more about that as we go. And you can see how that compares to 2010 right next to it. On your next page, the top of page two, is the statement of activities, operating statement for your general fund. You'll see the general fund took in 53 point, almost 53.8 million dollars. You had expenses of 52.4 million. You then had other financing uses, which is primarily transfers to other funds of 1.3. All said and done, your general fund was to the positive for the year ended December 31, 2011, for $117,342. So, out of $52 million of revenues, really a break-even year, $117,000 to the positive. That's very good in this economy. A lot of governmental units aren't able to do that there, and we do commend you on controlling your budget. With that said, if we can turn to page eight of the handout, we provide you, give you a few minutes, we provide you on page eight with some graphs on your general fund. They say pictures are worth, worth a lot more than words, and what we try to do is give you a pie chart here. You'll see, this is your revenues, the general fund revenues break down by major categories. You'll see about 51% of your general fund came in based on taxes, from tax revenues this year. That was compared to about 52% the year before. It stays pretty consistent from one year to the next. And you can see, charges for services was about 16% this year as compared to 13%. Just gives you a visual breakdown of where your revenues for the general fund come from. It's basically the same thing, it just breaks your expenditures down, and you'll see the largest pie, pieces of pie there is public safety, about 37% of your expenditures. General fund expenditures were for public safety. The next largest chunk there, and that was the same as the prior year, was the general government of about 19. General government includes a lot of departments, such as the clerks department, the treasurer's department, the administrator's department, the accounting department, HR, so forth. About 17 different departments in that category there. But you can see, they stay pretty consistent from year to year. That's about 19% of your general fund expenditures for the year ended December of 2011. On page 10, we just give you a bar graph of your total fund balance for the county for the last 10 years, and you will see it stayed pretty consistent. You've done a very good job of controlling your, maintaining your fund balance and controlling your expenditures. There, you can see it dropped a little bit in the, from back in 2002, but then it has come up for the last six years there, but just, just a little bit each year, so pretty consistent from year to year. Page 11, just gives you a line graph of your revenues and expenditures over the last 10 years, and you can see, for the last nine, revenues and expenditures have been almost exactly the same. They have the red and the blue line there on the, on the graph, which means when you prepare your budget, you, your revenues and expenditure are very accurate and very close to where your actual results are. If we can go back to page two of the handout then, number three there on page two, analysis of fund balance. I'm not going to go through these numbers. The fund balance basically is broken down this year into four different categories, and they're a little bit different than they have been in the past. There's what they call the non-spendable portion. That's the portion that is not readily available to spend in the coming year. And when we get down to the bottom, you'll see primarily that's made up of drain notes that you've purchased on a long-term basis that'll be paid back, but you can't appropriate it this year. Restricted dollars are just, was 44,760. That's dollars that's restricted by outside parties that you can only use for a particular purpose. And then finally, the unassigned category there, $5,152,137, is just, there's no restrictions to it whatsoever. We also give a 10-year history down below. You'll see the terminology is a little bit different. There was a change in the accounting standards last year that changed the terminology, so we just gave you the new terminology there. And again, number four there just breaks the non-spendable down and tells you what it is. Long-term receivable, again, your county treasurer, as a way to help increase the investment revenue, has purchased or advanced the drain commissioner some money. It reduces the interest that the drain commissioner has to pay, but also enhances the interest that the general fund earns, too. So, it's a win-win situation for, for both departments. If we turn over to page three, and I'm not going to go through all these numbers, I know you've got a long agenda tonight. On page three, this is what they call the other major governmental funds. Accounting standards, take a look at the funds, and they classify funds based on major or what they call non-major funds. Major funds are basically any fund that has more than 10% of the assets or revenues of the entity. And you'll see there is about, other than the general fund, there was five major funds, the Health Department, the Parks and Rec, the Library, the Senior Citizen Village, and the Mental Health Building Debt. You'll see each of the assets, each of, for each of those funds and liabilities and fund balance. I guess the important thing is there, the fund balance for all those funds are positive. There's no negative fund balance, no deficits there. If you go down, you'll see their fund balance or their carryforward into the current year of the Health Department of $1,271,000, the Parks and Rec of $2,910,000, the Library Fund of $2,472, the Senior Citizens of $659,000, $660,000, and then the Mental Health Debt is just $610 there. The very bottom of page three just shows you the revenues, expenses, and the difference between the revenues and expenses there. I would just say, just because it's in brackets don't mean there's problems. Sometimes these funds accumulate dollars and spend them there, but that's the result. For instance, the Health Department in total took, spent 207,000 more than they took in this year. The Parks spent 63,000 more. The Libraries did a good 106,944. You'll see the Senior Citizens, so it's to the negative 84,129, and the Mental Health Debt was negative $325. On page four, as you're well aware, there's a lot of other funds that are used to account for the activities of the county, and on page four, we list each of those funds with a very summarized revenues, expenses, and other financing sources, just to give you an idea of where each of the funds, the activities for the year. I'm not going to read each one of them, but you can see there the, whether it had an excess of revenues or over or under expenses for the year. Page five, are the same funds as the previous page, and it just gives you the carryforward of their fund balance as of December 31, 2011. The very last, or second to last column, you'll see the total there, and you'll see, again, all the funds had a positive fund balance or carryforward. There was no funds in the county in a deficit position as of December 31 there. Most of the money on these funds are restricted. They come in in the forms of either grants or revenues that are raised for a particular purpose, that can only be used for that purpose. So, most of the categories you'll see as, they're shown as restricted dollars there. At the bottom of page five, there's also a thing, funds called enterprise funds. These are the funds that operate similar to a business. I know you were just talking about charges. These are the type of funds that levy charges to pay for their cost. There's the solid waste, the delinquent tax revolving fund, the airport fund, sheriff concession, and then there's a couple in this other category. But what you see here is a solid waste, the current assets, the, what they call property plant and equipment, the buildings and the, if a solid waste, the cells out there, your current liabilities and your long-term liabilities. When you get to the bottom, you had net assets for the solid waste fund or your landfill of $15.6 million. You'll see your delinquent tax revolving fund had a net asset of $28 million. Your airport was $3.9 million there. If you turn to page six, this is the operating statement for each of those enterprise funds. Starts out with the operating revenues. Your operating expenses excluding depreciation there, then depreciation. You'll see the solid waste when you take that into effect. If you look, they had operating income and loss after depreciation of, of the cells of a negative a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So on, on accrual basis, they were down a hundred and eight thou, eight hundred and eight thousand, not a hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eight thousand. Your delinquent tax revolving fund, if you take a look at the very bottom line net income, they were to the positive, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand two seventy-five. Your airport fund, you transferred in two hundred and two thousand, but with that, you still had an operating loss of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for that fund. And we really would have to break these down to, to tell you why, to get a lot of detail on it. And the audit report has a lot more detail on that. The sheriff concession fund was to the good sixty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. The internal service fund at the bottom of page six is a fund used to account for all the self-insurance. As you're well aware, you're self-insured for not only some liability, but also some of the healthcare fund. And the internal service fund is a fund that's used to charge your other funds fees, and then they pay all the claims through the internal service fund. So it's, it really just services all the other funds of the county there. I guess the one thing I will note there, the special, just before the bottom of the page six, you'll see something called special item. That was your settlement with, with the Blue Cross, that refund that you received of one point seven million dollars. Page seven. We'll go into the item F there, pension funds. And I guess we'll go down to number two. You'll see your pension funds actually had a net decrease this year of three point nine million, three million nine hundred and seventy-two thousand. So when you take what the contribution was of eight million eight hundred and twenty-four thou, eight million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, your negative investment income, the stock market had a bad year of one point two million negative. You paid out eleven million five hundred and sixty-four thousand, so that left a net decrease for the year in your pension, basic pension fund of three point nine million dollars. You can see that same number for your other post-employment benefits was a negative nine hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and eight dollars. And your actuary takes that all into account when they determine your, your actual, your new rate that you have to contribute each year. That's primarily the number section. Overall, I think you're in good financial condition. Your accounting records seem to be getting better each year. You have made improvements each year. One of the things there in number six is something called the report on internal control. It's not connected to here. One of the things we have to do is when we do an audit, not only do we look at the numbers, but we have to take a look at your accounting controls, and if we become aware of any material weaknesses, we're required to communicate them to you. I'm happy to report that you didn't have any material weaknesses this year. You haven't had any for the last couple of years, which, in any of this size, that's pretty difficult to do. You know, there are things you definitely can, you know, each department can maybe do differently, but overall, your controls are, are good, we believe. There's also something called the management letter, that says the audit communication letter on the top of, I think that you received. When we get done this audit, we spend a half a day with your administration, and we go through the audit in a lot of detail. First of all, they, they're integral in pulling it together also. But then when we get all done and we go over there, we spend about a half a day going through what we found at each of the departments, what we'd like to see changed. It might be minor things, but we do talk, discuss them in a lot of detail. And a couple of those things are in that letter there, but we do spend a lot of time with the administrator and the accounting staff of the county. I know I went through the numbers very quickly, I could spend a lot more time, and it is a very, very large document.
Are there questions for Paul? Terry?
Maybe I have a question on, for Mr. Kaufman. I'm trying to understand this investment income, so we lost a million two on, on the investment. Is that, and what reason, what would that?
You're talking about the pension now, Terry.
Yeah, right. What would cause that?
The stock market went down, as he said, just the assets that the pension board chose to put the county pension money in, the value of those assets decreased.
We just assume that's just a one-year thing, or do we need some?
Depends on the market.
Discussion on, on how we can improve on that, or no?
Well, it depends on the market. I mean, the pension board has an investment advisor. I'm the representative on the pension board. The pension board has an investment advisor. We, as a pension board, we try to select prudent investments for the, for the pension board, and I think, you know, like all funds, you know, they've been up and down the last few years. I mean, we're not invested in cash. If you want a absolute, no chance for loss, you know, you'd invest in cash, but if you're invested in the market, you're, it's going to be up and down.
Can I add, although that's a large number, a million two is a large number, there's a hundred and seventy million dollars of assets in that, in that investment. So it, as a percentage, it's a very small percentage of, of your assets. Out of a hundred and seventy million at the beginning of the year, it was one point two, so what would that be? That'd be a half a percent?
Something less than one, for sure.
Just off the top of my head.
Yeah.
So I mean, still a large number, don't get me wrong.
Yeah. Other questions?
Yeah, just one, and not that we have an answer for it yet, but the one thing that got me was the revenue sharing. Any status on that? For revenue, one from the state.
Well, yes, and we, and we can talk more about that during a budget workshop, but, but yes, the, there have been changes in revenue sharing. We do have some good information that we'll share with you when we start talking about the two thirteen budget, and how some of the changes in revenue sharing, the formula and the schedule for the release of those funds, and they will impact primarily the two thousand and thirteen budget.
Other questions? I just make one comment, Paul, the top of page A two, the second paragraph, the policy on EFTs and dual control, and I would just echo your recommendation, how important that is that the county fully adopt dual control for a release of electronic funds.
They have started that policy last year, and we're just asking them to, you know, kind of continue on with that, and maybe look at the thresholds of, of where, where it's required.
Yeah.
It's, it's one of the areas that we, we spend a lot of time with.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, it will, we, do we need a motion to move this on?
So, just a file.
Okay. Terry is on your motion to receive and file this?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to work with you again.
Item B is the second amendments to the two thousand and twelve general fund and prosecutor's forfeiture special revenue fund budgets. There's a memo in your packet. Kerry isn't here, did you want to quickly go through anything, Mr. Kaufman, or?
The information is here before you, you know, every year we go through a series of budget adjustments. Many times those, those adjustments are based on the timing of the receipt of, of grant revenues and expenditures. Changes that the board makes throughout the year with the budget may be a staffing issue or other expense that wasn't included in the original budget. And then there are other issues where we, we come across a number that may have been put in one particular account, really should be moved in another. That's what this is. This is just a lot of housekeeping that occurs, but one thing I will make sure that everyone understands is that the proposed changes to the general fund budget does not take the county's budget out of balance, it remains balanced. And in fact, as a result of these changes, is our, our contingency fund has increased ever so slightly, but it has increased. So this has not affected us in an adverse way at all.
I would echo the, I would just simply echo the nice thing that the contingency fund increased to a hundred and sixty-two thousand. Commissioner London?
I would move to approve the budget adjustments as printed before us.
Is there support for that?
Support.
It's final action tonight, or you need it put to a?
Right. You need?
Move to the full board.
Right. Questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item C, professional service agreement, convergent design.
Chairman, I'll move that we send that on to the full board.
Is there support?
Second.
Seeing none? All those in favor?
You want to, because this? I, I can just review very quickly. When we began the project for the convention center, we, we did hire an outside consultant that helped us with ensuring that the facility we constructed met a certain market demand out there. As a result of the work that that consultant did, he suggested we hire an advisor, an architectural advisor that specializes in construction, designing these types of facilities, and we use him to review the work that we do, the design work that we do. This contract puts that particular consultant, convergence design, under contract for the term of what we believe will be the design and construction phase, to just advise us, to review plans, and make sure that we are going to be able to hit that segment of the market that we're shooting for.
Commissioner Rushing?
Just two things. I see the effective date is August first, two thousand and twelve. How come you posted a contract? That's under section two point one?
That's, well, again, that's something that commonly we, we do, depending on we start, when we start negotiating the final draft.
And the other one would be seven point six. I know we did a similar contract. How would they be applicable for any permits and licenses? We have it in the contract, why would that be in there if they're not going to be, have anything to do with permits and licenses? Seven point six.
Yes, I see it on page seven. A lot of this information here is boilerplate language. If there is something that, like some of the insurance requirements were specifically removed from this contract, we do not expect this particular architect to be responsible for any permits or licenses. The architect record would be.
The question that would be, why is it in the contract?
Why don't we pull it up?
Because we removed from the previous one.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hyde?
Just, just a, a comment, you know. I, I think you talk about doing due diligence. Everything we're doing on this, you know, is just making sure that we get it right. And I think this is just another layer on that of making sure that this project is done right.
I believe we have a motion in support to send this on to full board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's a purchase agreement, item seven D, between the county and Smith Family Funeral Home for the Craft Road project or property, and this is for final action. Purchase agreement is for twenty-five thousand. I think this was talked about at the workshop. Is, first of all, is there a motion for this?
I would make that motion.
Support.
Questions? Commissioner Rushing?
In the contract prior to, and I didn't see it in here, maybe it is, but part of the purchase agreement would be that they would be allowed to have a sign out on the road. If they don't get that sign agreement to be put out by the road for the funeral home, they're not going to purchase the property. That's not in here in our workshop, we discussed that. Do we have that agreement from the?
They have, Commissioner, they've actually removed that as a contingent on the, on the sale, so that is not something that's required to?
At the workshop, that was?
To finalize. Yes, yes, it was, but subsequent to that, it's been removed.
Good question. Any other questions? Todd, I did notice that the county's responsible for any special assessments. I guess I just want to make sure that somebody looks at that. I mean, as long as the assessments aren't more than the purchase price, I'd say we go ahead and close anyway, but it's amazing where you can find an assessment you'd never expected. Sure. Speaking from experience. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Says for final action.
Oh, that's for final action. Do we need roll call?
Would you need roll call?
I'm sorry, thank you. Commissioner Hyde?
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greata?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Item seven E, resolution twelve twenty-eight, Michigan Liquor Control Commission issuance of liquor license for convention center. Before you is a resolution to, I'm assuming start the process to get a liquor license for the convention center.
Correct.
I would move the resolution twelve twenty-eight.
Support.
Questions?
It just, there's a little math here, but I see we're going to be looking at something shortly here that says forty-three thousand square feet, now it's forty-five thousand square feet on this one, not that it really matters.
Good thing it says approximately, huh? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven F, food and beverage catering agreement with OCM Development on the convention center.
Chairman, I would move that we send this to the full board.
Second.
Just out of curiosity, how do we account for, how do we know when it's fifteen percent of what figure? What is the?
Auditting process that?
They, they hand it to us and say, here's what we did?
They will be required, in here, there are requirements that they provide us, copies of all their initial contracts with anyone that rents or uses the facility, as well as receipts and other items that we can use to help audit what actually went out the door and what actually came in on their balance sheets.
Okay.
Duh, sorry.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yeah, I look at the exhibits, and I see there's exhibit A and exhibit D. Where is B and C? If we're going to move this to the final board, where's the other two exhibits that should be included in the contract?
If I have this right, we only have an exhibit A in this agreement, is that correct?
Yes.
I wondered why it looked like that exhibit D was a stray, because it didn't appear to really have anything to do with this. I saw that too, but.
Yeah. The only thing, actually, Ms. Posey brought this up before the meeting as well, we couldn't find reference to exhibit D within the document itself. However, if you look at exhibit D, you'll see under item three, there is reference to this particular facility. I, I'm just wondering if maybe this was attached by Mr. Fletcher, just so they are on notice of what this particular standard or requirement would be. But that's something we can certainly clarify before the, before the full board, yes.
Just for a point of clarification, I hadn't at least heard of OCM Development LLC. Is that a subsidiary of Meritage?
I think it's a parent or holding company of Meritage. I know my partner reviewed that, and I don't recall exactly, but it is an entity over, it's not a separate entity just created for this purpose, it's an existing entity that is either a parent or a holding company for Meritage. So I think we have the right entity.
I just wondered what it was more than the right, because I didn't know, hadn't heard the name. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven G, architect agreement with design plus for the convention center. I think that was at your place.
I'd make the motion.
Second.
Questions?
This is my last, I'm going to full board.
Full board. Full board.
Just considered one of those soft costs, built in there as a soft cost?
Actually, in the, in the original project budget that some of you may recall, and I believe it's, it's in that big binder that you received early on in the project, this particular cost was included in the, the total project budget of nine million dollars for this amount. So, yes, it probably is included when you look at, let's say, the construction manager agreement, and we had a smaller, more, exactly, that would be, that would be included in the soft cost, yes.
You got one, the one point two million there, so that's part of that.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Other questions?
Just one, a previous contract that we had, it's eleven months, this one's sixteenth. I guess that's just in case we have overruns.
Well, generally, we like to keep the contract, the, the architect under contract until all of the punch list items are taken care of. So the construction may be done, but you may go for several months trying to take care of little gaps in the molding and things like that, that you want to keep the architect around for.
Commissioner Hyde? We're, we're not really scheduled to start construction on our part of this project for, what, another couple of months anyway? So September, October, if we get started by November, and you add eleven months on to that, the architect has to, to start right away in designing and building and getting all of the bid documents ready. So if you look at the start time and finish time, it, it may be all of sixteen months before we get our part done. I, I, just looking at.
Other questions? If not, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other ways and means matters? Seeing none, in your packet, there were some informational items, SEMCOG Plus of the Region Survey, MTA Capital Currents, City Port here on notice on a Brownfield adoption plan, SEMCOG Invitation for Public Comment. Is there a motion?
Move to receive and file.
Court? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move, we adjourn.
No, how about motion to receive and file packets?
He just did that.
Well, that was, he was motioning to receive the information-only items.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I would move to receive and file packets.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now you can adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
There we go.
I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting. The clerk would take the role, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Bowman?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Present.
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
We have a call.
Under additions and deletions, I would like to make 7A and 7B for final action. Those are a couple of memorandums, unless somebody has an objection to that. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any citizens wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting? The none, are there any updates? Commissioners? Conceptual initiatives? Nothing? Great. Old business, none, new business. Item A, 2009 Memorandum of Agreement with Wayne County Port Authority EOC Project. See Jeff Friedland here?
Yep.
He's approaching me.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
I am just terrific, especially on this topic. As we head into grant year 13, this was, this process started back in '08, '09, and DHS has given final approval to the grant process, and are in a position to release the money to the county. What this does is, it's actually through the Port Security Grant. That is a grant that would allow for purchases or construction of emergency operations center. The southeastern Michigan maritime security plan clearly identifies that one major gap in their whole plan is there is not a functional EOC, Emergency Operations Center, in St. Clair County, and they put that as a priority. And as I say, we've worked through the process, we've talked about money to buy a facility, the fact that we would locate a generator at, the need to locate a generator at a facility if there wasn't backup power, and the fact that this also would need perhaps fiber for the county system, so we can extend that and have that available, so we have that maximized. All that went through the federal process and was finally approved. So we, needed, we can put a generator in, we can run fiber to the facility when we determine what we're going to do there. So the money's there. It's a 25% match. Some of that can be soft match. There's going to be some time that IT is going to have to work with us in building maintenance, so the cost of their time in that can be included in the match.
Okay. Questions for Jeff? Anybody?
I move for approval. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and support to accept this for final action. All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good, thank you.
Just a comment. You said we've been working on this since 2008?
The proposal was for 2008 or '09 funding. You always know these things are a couple of years.
Yeah, I know.
Same with this next grant.
All right. Item 7B then is the 2009 Memorandum of Agreement with Wayne County Port Authority Radar, Data, and Video Server, and this also is for final action.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint, you know, point out the efficiency of DHS. This is a 10 grant, fiscal year 10, grant year 10, so, you know, they're a little bit quicker. This originally was a project that was funded for the Michigan State Police. The Michigan State Police was not in a position to extend their grant, and it would look like the money and that was going to go to the South. We looked at this proposal. This is very beneficial to St. Clair County. The state police gave us the equipment. We were able to scale the grant down as far as, because we changed the scope of the project in that this will benefit not only the county law enforcement agencies, but it will also benefit the Michigan State Police Fusion Center and the Operations Integration Center at Selfridge, which is CBP. So this shows a true local, state, and federal partnership. All this does is enhance the computers, or the server for the radar. That needs to be done. The company has committed to any additional funds needed that they don't foresee. They will cover the cost, so there's absolutely no cost to the county. It just gives us a tremendous asset.
Thank you. Questions for Jeff on this radar grant, $74,575?
I'll move that we approve.
Support.
I have a motion to support. Is there any other discussion?
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Item 7C, Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement.
I'll point out the efficiency of this grant. The expiration date is about 25 days from now. It's a fiscal year 12 grant. We're getting the agreement. The history on this is, is we've received this grant for 25, 30 years. It pays a portion of my salary and benefits, which the county's required to do as I submit quarterly reports on our activities, and there's certain meetings that I do have to attend or have our representatives, so.
So we have to still pay your mileage, right?
Pardon me?
Just kidding.
I make the motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to support to send this on to the full board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you sticking around. Item 7D is friend of court CRP Contract Approval, and this is for final action. I see Renee Tapalouski is in the audience, if you would like to.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Renee Tapalouski. I'm the deputy friend of court. Susan was not able to attend tonight, so she asked that I come in her stead. What we have before you tonight is what's called our CRP contract. That is our Cooperative Reimbursement Program. It's a contract that we've entered into for probably 30 years with the state, and in essence, this contract allows us to receive reimbursements for about 66% of those costs associated with 4D funding in our office, costs of child support enforcement, child support establishment, and child support modification. So any of those costs that are incurred through the budget, we can get up to 66 or at 66% reimbursement. This contract is a three-year contract. It starts October 1st, and will go through, excuse me, September 30th, 2015. It is a three-year cycle contract. Some of you may remember that previously it was an annual contract. The state has changed that to put us on a three-year cycle. It's projected that this contract will bring to the general fund over the next three years about $6,948,000 and some change. The contract before you has been reviewed by both Susan and myself, and it is substantially the same as it has been within the last three-year contract. There are a few changes, they're mostly grammatical. One of the notable changes would be that the contract does now require us to do everything electronically. The state's moving toward the electronic method. That means we have to e-sign it, we have to make any changes to the budget, amend them electronically. In fact, Judge Kelly has already signed this contract electronically as well, and at this point, we're asking if Commissioner Bowman would electronically sign the contract so we can pursue with getting that overturned. The contract deadline is for September 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the friend of court CRP Contract Approval for final action.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Are there any other questions or discussions for Renee?
Just.
Commissioner Rushing?
I see you got a 66% match, you got a net budget amount of $9,773,413, and in the contract, you have a maximum amount that can be collected. Whether our expenses go above or go above that, we still can only collect this amount.
Yeah, these are projected numbers. Obviously, we know for the next two years, these numbers could change, because what happens with our income is when we collect on what we spend. So if our expenses decrease, our revenues could decrease as well. So the next two years, these are projected numbers for us.
But in the, it says maximum amount, Section D, and two, Section D, it says the maximum amount that we can collect is accounting, you already gave, $6,948,396.
I'm sorry.
Part two, it would be on, let's see if, it's hard to read a page, there isn't a page number on it, would be Section 2, DHS Duties and Responsibilities, and then it would have been D underneath that, the maximum amount of the agreement. It might be.
Okay, you're on page 13? Maximum amount of agreement?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that's correct. That would be the maximum amount based upon these projections, but we are subject to amend these.
If it's in the contract, I can amend. Just a question, if it's in the contract, if we have over, let's say 11 million.
The contract allows us to make amendments to the budget. We have to give notice to DHS. I think there's a 30-day period we have to provide amendments to the budget.
Just concerned about the, it says maximum we can collect, and if our expenditures exceed it, and we only get 60% of the total expenses to the county, it would match the 66% that can possibly be collected. But you just have the wording in the contract, so that's the only exception I got. If there's a maximum amount in there, it should mean that's the maximum amount we can get.
Well, what I can do is I can have Susan call you and answer any questions on that, but from what I understand with this, that it could be subject to change based upon any amendments that could be occurring because of the way, this is projected for three years. So when we project it to DHS or to the state, we're saying that this is what we're anticipating we're going to be at reimbursements on. But I understand your question.
I don't want to be a million and a hole. We do have corporate counsel here. Is my point valid or not?
Are the expenses that are being projected, I mean, is there a projection that they're going to be a substantial increase, so that taking 2/3 of that budget would go over the $6.9 million number? I mean, is that a?
I can't answer that question, I'm sorry.
I mean, the way the agreement is, it is capped at $6.9 million, which of course is a substantial sum.
Right. Well, we're looking at pretty tight budget amounts, and we're looking at other items, and if we're going to look at a hole down the road here, because the county takes more expenses than, than we, or more expenses than we collect 66%, that's part of the budget we're going to have to incorporate in our budget.
If this is going to be the amount, if this is going to be the amount that we're going to receive at the max, then, I mean, that's the maximum they're saying that we're going to get at this point. But what I'll do is I'll have my friend of court call you, and she can talk to you to clarify that issue if you'd like more.
It sounds like amending these is a fairly routine thing.
We've done it for 30 years.
So anything is amending, and if both parties agree, anything can be amended.
It doesn't say it's non-modifiable, non-reviewable, and you guys do that.
I'm sorry, Steve?
It doesn't say it's non-modifiable or non-reviewable. You can go back and amend it if the parties agree.
Well, that's, it requires both parties to agree.
Sure. Commissioner Hydeman?
And I can assure you, if our amount has to go over the amount we budgeted for it, we're going to say no, or at least I am. And I assume you will, too.
Most likely.
Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Kaufman?
If I could just add one comment. As Renee indicated when she began, this is a new three-year agreement. In the past, these were one-year agreements. And what friend of the court had always done in the past is, they got their amount, they knew how much money they were going to be eligible, and then what they did was they built their budget around that to ensure that they did not exceed the amount that was made available. Now that we've got a three-year contract, what we'll be looking at is likely, working with the friend of the court office to determine, okay, how much do you think you'll need in the first year, second year, and then build budgets around that to ensure that that number is not exceeded.
Any other comments, questions? I believe we have a motion. Roll call.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Renee, thank you very much for coming. 7E, I believe, next, Prosecuting Attorney Title 4D Cooperative Reimbursement Program, 2013-15, for final action. Everybody from the prosecutor's office was able to be here today, but I did talk with both Mr. Wendling and with Steve Gilliot, and they assured me that this is something that they do on a regular basis, that it's just a routine piece that comes in, goes back out, it happens every year.
Make the motion.
Support. Motion to support. Questions? Tell you why it was on for final action on committee? Any, I'm sorry, did they indicate why it was up for final action at committee? No, he didn't, but I suspected it was a timeframe that's generally what it's going to be.
It's the same contract as the friend of the courts, except it's for the prosecuting attorneys, and they have the same deadline.
Yeah, September 14th, yeah. That's generally why.
Sorry.
I had the same concern. If it's September 14th, why couldn't we have seen this a month ago? Because I don't understand these figures that are given to us. I'm just going to take it on its surface that these figures are correct. We haven't had any time to verify that these figures are correct.
It looks like the actual agreement's dated 8/29, if you look at the top of the first page. So it, we didn't have it because they didn't have it.
Well, if this is an ongoing thing, that's been happening annually.
From the state.
That's how they go.
They come to us this way. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'd move.
Second. Motion to support?
Yeah, we've already had.
Okay, then this is final action. Let's do roll call.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Uh, F, is the Marine City District Court sign installation? Tim, I see you're here. If we have any questions, we're going to call on you. Has everybody looked at it and studied the sign, the price, why they're doing it, what they're doing? Final action? This is for final action. I can tell you, if you ever get down Elginak Way, the same company that put in the sign at the Elginak Housing Commission, Philip Sign is doing the sign in Marine City, and it is an LED lighted sign in the daytime. It looks like it's just a sign with black letters, but when you go by it at nighttime, the LED lights, very tiny lights are in the background. They light up and shine through. It's a very attractive sign at night, probably even more so than in the daytime. Questions from anybody? Commissioner?
One, because we have something similar when I was township supervisor. I'm sure the ordinance, this is in compliance with the city ordinance that allows the maximum amount of lighting. You can't have so many luminizations in the light, so I'm sure it passes the ordinance, the local ordinance, just that part of the city.
Yes, Ed from Philip Signs has, is there, making sure that it implies the local ordinance.
Hey, because that wasn't in there, so.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion then?
I move.
Motion by Bohm.
Second.
And by Samasco. Any other questions? On favor, let's do a roll call.
This is just going on the full board anyway. Oh, maybe go final, I'm sorry, I'm sleepy.
Oh, it is going on the full board, I'm sorry. No, oh, final action? Let's do final action then. Roll call.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Tim, thanks for coming, and go ahead, put your sign up. We'll see you tonight on the way home. All right, seven G, inter-agency agreement with community mental health intervention center, mental health coordination.
And make a motion.
Second.
Motion and support to send it on to the full board. Are there any questions on this?
We have Mr. Bliss here from the Sheriff's Department. Do.
No questions? All right, all in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you very much, thank you for being here. Seven I, marine safety grant agreement, or program grant agreement for final action.
What happened to H?
Skip to H.
H?
I did.
H, yes.
I did.
Ice. Ah.
Hey, Max. All right, let's back up then. All right, thank you. H, inter-government service agreement with U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Immigration and Customs Enforcement. We have Captain Bliss in the audience, if we have any questions?
I made a motion.
Second.
Motion and support? Now, are there any questions for anybody? Personally, I would like to say, I think, a job well done. The government tried to knock it from eighty-four plus down to eighty, and Captain Bliss went in, fully armed to, uh, well, I don't mean it that way. Fully armed with his information to negotiate and came out with eighty-two dollars. So I thought he did a pretty good job of beating up the federal government.
Halfway, right?
Halfway anyway, good job.
Actually, the cost analysis came on seven-four thirty.
Okay, very good. All right, so are we going to send this on to the full board then?
Motion. Second.
Motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Captain, thank you for being here. All right, let's do I, marine safety program grant agreement fiscal year twelve for final action.
And make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have, nobody here from the Marine Patrol. Are there any questions that anybody could answer, that anybody may have? I believe this is pretty much routine. No questions from anybody?
I'll make the motion.
We already did. All in favor, send this on to the full board, say aye.
Aye.
It's final action.
Final action. Roll call.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, seven J, Michigan health, or mental health court grant application fiscal year two thousand thirteen.
I'd move.
Second.
We have a motion and a quick second. Send us on to the full board, are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. And, uh, okay. Secondary road patrol and traffic accident prevention program grant application, two thousand thirteen, also for final action.
Motion. Move. For final action.
Support.
I have a motion and a support for final action on this. Again, I spoke with the sheriff about this. It's something they do on a routine basis. If you looked at the figures in the packet, they've steadily gone down, started up in the hundred-and-ninety range, we're down in the hundred-and-thirty range, but the best we're going to get, so. Final action. All right.
Is there any match money on this bill?
No, no match money. Any other questions or discussions? Roll call.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Other judiciary and public safety matters, I have a couple of items. First off, I would like to send my personal condolences, and I think the board's condolences also, to Lieutenant Green family, who just passed away this week. Services are going to be Saturday. You can see it online in different locations. If you have any questions, get in touch with anybody at the sheriff's office, myself, even central dispatch has that information. So, and the fundraiser they did for the family netted a tremendous amount of money somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty thousand dollars. It was very well attended by several of the commissioners here and a lot of other people out there. It's going to come in very, very handy to the family, so I was very pleased to see that. And again, our condolences to the family.
Mr. Chairman, at the fundraiser, the family came around to every table thanking all the people that were there. I thought that was incredible. Very, very nice.
It was a packed house at Alexander's, both sides. It was very well attended, a lot of gifts, a lot of hard work. They did a great job. On one other matter, I would like to compliment the Clay Township Police Department and the Port Huron Police Department for collaborating. A few days ago, there was an armed robbery in the Elginak area. A gas station was held, or was robbed. The surveillance film was turned over to the police department, and within five hours, they had come up to Port Huron, run it through some special equipment that they have, they were able to identify. They can enhance things like tattoos and other things. They were able to identify the individual, and within five hours, he was in custody. And within five hours and five minutes, he had confessed to the crime, and he's behind bars. And it was something that I thought was really neat, and I told both Chief Drake and Chief Reeves that I thought it was a great job of collaboration between the two different departments. So my hats off to both those guys for doing that. Any other judiciary, public safety matters?
Move to receive and file packets.
First, we got information only on the two thousand eleven, twelve childcare fund plan. If I can get a motion to receive and file that first, Terry?
So move.
Support. Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And to receive and file the full packet now?
So move.
Support. Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Would you like to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Need support?
Howard, supported.
Support. Motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Be adjourned.
Almost a good catch there. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Sure. Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Greitath?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain to, a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Support.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner London, supported by?
Greitath.
Greitath, missed, oh, Commissioner Greitath made the motion. Commissioner London's support. Okay, any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, any updates from commissioners? Commissioner Rushing?
Hopefully, this is the right place to put this, but attended a road commission meeting at Riley Township. They held it seven PM on Tuesday night. Just got a few quick items here. One, we had a resident there, Dougal Haskins. He lives out on Harson's Island and worked with Tom Kramer, one of the road foremen's out there, and did an excellent job. They worked with a private contractor to put a culvert in with the road commission, and he just commended the road commission. It made a special trip out to Riley from Harson's Island, and I just thought we should give thanks to Tom Kramer as one of our road foremans. Another thing is, not only this would happen in Riley Township, which was, but we had a public hearing and actually returned the name from Cowie Road back to Cowie Road, just a spelling, it went back to the family name. It was changed back in seventy-eight, and nobody took notice to it until one of the uncles was very ill right now, and he requested. So it was brought forward, and they did the research and found out that the name was, the signs are spelled wrong. So that was changed. What other one thing? Potentially, we're going to have four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars available from MDOT and working with SEMCOG, possible funds for Fred Moore Highway. And that potentially going to get two crossings, Rattle Run Road and Bauman Road, working with Don Brown, Candace Miller, Andrea LaFontana, myself contacting the railroad to get the railroad crossings, pretty unsafe crossings, so potentially get that. And then also, the last one, Riley Center Bridge, forty-two-foot bridge going to be used with federal funds from the millage that was just passed. We put that in, it's going to be start in the spring with the construction happening in the summer. That's a pretty large savings to the county because ninety-five percent will be paid from federal funds.
None of the missions, I also attended the road commission meeting in Riley, and the Michigan Road, the Grizzle Road is open, and that's helped a lot of people traveling around, but Michigan is still closed, and that'll be, they're going to work as far as they can into the winter, but during the middle of the winter, they'll be, the work will cease for the Michigan Road Bridge, new bridge.
Any other updates? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives from administration?
No, sir.
Okay, any old business? Seeing none, new business? First item is the St. Clair County International Airport Contract with MDOT for Weather Observation and Data Dissemination System.
I'd move.
Second.
Okay, I don't think, this is fairly straightforward. Are there any questions or any items that we want to discuss regarding this? We have a motion that's been seconded. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll have this at the full board meeting for final action. The Blue Water Riverwalk Acquisition Grant, I see Dennis here. If there are any questions? They finally came through.
I'd make a motion to send this on.
Been moved and seconded.
Just another footnote, I don't know if you saw the press release from Candace Miller's office today, they received the two million dollars.
For river restoration?
Yeah. Yeah.
Excellent. I know Marysville has received some money for river restoration, and for us to get it done, more power to us. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. The Fort Granger Lighthouse ADA Walkway Benches and Interpretive Panel Project. This is part of that grant, Dennis, is that correct? That grant was for how much? How much?
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand. And as you can see, the bids are coming in for this project considerably less. Would you like to elaborate on what the intention is with the rest of the grant money?
Sure, no problem, Howard. We did come in well under on the grant. There's in excess of twenty-two, or about twenty, just under twenty-two thousand available for additional work. What we're hoping to do is some additional concrete work for sidewalks at the site that are in dire need of repair. Also, more ADA accessible pathways going to the lighthouse itself, and some interpretive panels. The current plan calls for five panels and quite a bit of concrete work. But because we came under the available budget, we sent a request into SHPO for additional work. And that additional work would cover those, some sidewalk, more sidewalk repairs that still need to be fixed, and also more interpretation. The site was very popular this year, extremely popular, with a lot of foot traffic from visitors out of the state and beyond. So with that traffic, we watch patterns and see where people are going in the site. There's definitely a need for concrete sidewalks going to the lighthouse and to the other buildings. And so the hope is, is that we'll be able to do that. Any work that's done will be based on the unit prices that we've already received, so we'll be able to go that route. But what we're looking at is we would like to approve this as is, and then add it as a change order, possible change order in the future.
Okay. Do you need this in two motions? One for the DNE landscaping of Richmond for the concrete work and that, and then one from the Pennsylvania company for the interpretive?
I believe that's correct, Howard.
Okay. Could we have a motion for the first item?
I would so move that we may award the contract to DNE Landscape of Richmond in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-five cents.
Support.
We have a motion and support, any other discussion?
This for final action tonight?
No.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, could we have the second one, the opinion of Pennsylvania?
Make a motion.
Second.
It's made by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Samasco for four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars for the interpretive panels. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question before Dennis leaves?
Sure.
Did you get the rest of the light station painted on the outside, and is it adhering? Is it going to work this time?
Yeah, what we did was, after extensive investigation into why the paint was peeling, or the coating, I should say, it's not really a paint, it's a coating, we found that there were just intense amount of moisture inside of the building, and so we corrected that by installing a humidity-controlled fan that actually is exhausting that moist air from the tower. After letting that run most of the summer, and the fact that we had a really dry summer, really helped the fact that when we did wait to adhere the coating, it did adhere, and it's, it looks great. There hasn't been any issues whatsoever. The first time the coating was applied before we discovered the issue, you know, you noticed it right away. This time, there is no evidence of any sort of failure on the tower. It looks fantastic, and I think it's going to last quite a while.
The company that did it in the first place, they stood behind it, so they did it second time at no cost?
Yes, they did it as a warranty.
Okay. What would the life expectancy on that coating be?
It can vary, five years, ten years, depending on the weather conditions and how it adhered. But I think we're going to get, I'm hoping that we'll get an extended life out of it because it did adhere very well.
Thank you.
While we have, oh, go ahead, David.
Well, I see we covered two of the expenses on this project. Is the BMJ contract, do we need to have anything actually taken on the twenty-eight hundred dollars? Is that separate?
Contracted services?
Well, you have a topographical survey of the site for BMJ for twenty-eight hundred. That's the third item here, a third expense?
I thought he did that a long time ago.
I did two, that's.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, that's a good point, though.
Previously.
Yeah, I think that was previously covered when we did the initial surveying. We had them do the initial surveying of the whole site.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say, if you read this, Mark's memo was requesting a total approval of thirty-eight, and the two we approved don't total that. I'm guessing if you accumulate all four of them, they do total that. I don't, I'd have to do the math fairly quickly in my head, but it looks like he's looking for approval on those other two as well. How about if I make a motion for the approval of the Pam Blough and BMJ contract amounts? And if you end up not needing it, you can take it out of the minutes or rule it obsolete.
Second.
Okay, I would. Do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah. Mr. Bohm?
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Thank.
Good catch, David. Before you leave there, just comment about the successful Bridgewater on Labor Day. This is, how many years?
Five years.
Five years? And you're not quite rivaling the walk across the Mackinaw Bridge, but it's at least a start.
Yeah, we average around two hundred people, and all of them are very, very impressed with the trestle. They can't believe that we have something like that right here in St. Clair County. So that's one of the biggest comments we hear, is that that's pretty amazing, and the condition of the trail.